All right, it is six thirty in the evening. I'd call this meeting to order. Mr. Hall, would you give us a prayer, please?
O God, Heavenly Father, we do not come to you this evening just out of habit or ritual. We come with full knowledge that you are the great One of wisdom and you give us wisdom and discernment of what we need to do. And we don't ask for your blessing upon our decisions. We ask for that you give us your decisions and we would be a blessing. And we pray it this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember McMinn is absent. Councilmember Heffner?
Here.
Councilmember Brooke?
Here.
Councilmember Rubel?
Here.
We have a quorum first up on the agenda tonight. Council, you'll need to by motion excuse Ms. Stacy for she's out of town with her son at Chicago. So I entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion second, excuse her.
Second.
Hold the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up on the agenda is review and approval of the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three council minutes.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next on the report, or agenda, is the Department reports and financials. I entertain a motion to accept as presented. Motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Planning Commission report.
Good evening, everyone. As always, it's a pleasure to be in front of you. We had a little bit of business last month. The, we had a public hearing on the conversion from R1 to C2 on Highway thirty-eight. And that public hearing lasted our thirty minutes. There were a few concerns about it, but none of the issues that were brought up from the previous meetings that we had. And after that, we went into our committee meeting, our commission meeting. And getting there, our old business, though, first was Mayor Gastnow and dealing with the UDO. And I guess we have that now and it will be going out to all of us here shortly. And that's good. New business, and this is one you will need to take some kind of action upon, is that the R1 to C2 was presented by Tim Lemmons. And Tim put together, and I don't know if we have anything, we don't have anything up here to show, but Tim came up with a solution for us as far as being able to help convert some of this property in, off of thirty-eight and near Ferguson to be able to get it so we can have some commercial, but also blended it in with both residential and that helped alleviate a lot of the concerns that the people that already had the homes there, that they now know that there won't be a business backed up to their particular backyard. All those in the future that we come would already know that it's commercial. And so I think that this was a good solution. Thank you, Tim, for coming up with that. And the other three things that we have, and we'll come back to that action later, we had three variances that were also requested. We had one from James Schwartz, and that was at thirty-eight twenty on Highway thirty-eight. He wanted the variance to put a fence in on his front yard. We went through the whole process. We approved it. He met the requirements. That was the right of way for the state more than anything else because he had exceeded and gotten into the right of way. He made those corrections and we approved his variance so that he would be able to have a fence in the front yard that he wants to be able to help with his children, with his dogs, and also to keep people out of his front yard that are walking back and forth to Coco's and to the gas station.
I do have a question about that. How come he can't get the five foot approved? Did he not want five foot? Because I'd be worried about a dog jumping over four foot.
Well, actually, we did do a variance on that, too. And Gary, I think we did four feet for him, didn't we? Because he had it at four feet is what he had it, but ours says three feet. And then they went and met, had a discussion, and I think that Gary and them came back and said that they could, they could deal with that.
Is it going to be a chain link?
No, it's the wire that's there now. He's already got it up.
Yeah, he's got it up.
He was actually putting it up. Michael and I stopped to visit with him because he didn't have a fence permit, and we knew that he exceeded the highest requirement as it is. Our ordinance says-
Okay, but he was putting up a four foot, so he-
He was putting up a four foot. That's all he's ever wanted. He, the ordinance says anything taller than three and a half feet has to be granted a variance.
Okay. That's no prob- if he's happy with four, then that's fine. But I was just, I know my dog would jump a four.
That's what he requested, and that's what he was putting up when we, when we saw that he had already started work on it. So they, they gave him a variance from the three and a half feet to the four feet.
Yes.
I know my neighbors have a three foot with electric running across the top.
Anything protruding past the front of the house has to be three, three and a half feet or shorter without a variance.
Okay. I would just saw the four foot and knew my dog would be jumping over.
That's what he asked for.
Okay.
That's any type of material, right? That's any type of material, building material?
Yes, it's, yes.
It just has to be opaque.
It has to be opaque. It has to be, you have to be-
Opaque is what it had to be.
Yeah, you have to be able to see through it, like at the intersection. If your second car back, you can still kind of see through that. It has, it does have to be opaque. It has to be, you have to be able to see through it.
And his bushes are going to come down. They're dead anyhow, but they're already in the right of way, so he's going to have to pull those out, even if he wants to save them. And he knows that when we had the discussions with him.
The only thing he wanted to do that, that we couldn't allow him to do was go closer to the highway, but that's, we don't have the right to grant a variance in the state highway, so.
I did, like I said, I was just making sure y'all didn't tell him only four foot because I know my dog would jump four foot.
That's what he requested.
Somebody walked by, he'd be on them.
And we did contact Hardout and they came out and staked it.
Yes, they actually-
They staked it for him, so he now knows everything, so, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
And Jerry, I put the R1 up on the screen.
Oh, okay, we'll go back to that and let me just finish up the variances, then we'll come back to that. Okay, the second variance was a replat, and that was at Chesapeake Drive, and that was both for lots thirty and twenty-eight, and that was done by Danielle Hunt. And what they did is she needed an extra two feet, so she negotiated with her neighbors and they came up with an agreement. She got the additional two feet to be able to put her camper in on the side without being able to get into problems. And so we have a letter from them where they agreed to it all. They've already put in the concrete to it, and we approved that variance. And then the last variance that we had was going to be a carport, and that was at twenty-two Sodder, at Sodder, and that was brought up by Brandon Taylor. He has a new truck. It won't fit in the garage. It's too tall. And so he had, after the hailstorms, he needed to come up with a way to be able to take care of his truck. So he asked for a variance to put a carport in on the side of his home. On that side of the home that he put the carport on is also where there is a retention pond so that there's nobody that will be building on that particular side. So we went ahead and granted him the variance for his carport so that he can get his truck covered. And those were the things that we dealt with at our last meeting. And now that we have the, well, the picture back up, we can go back and, I guess, deal with the rezoning request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any. And I know Tim will and anybody else, and Gary, too.
That will come out of here later unless the Council would like to go ahead and move that particular ordinance up front and take care of it now. We'll go ahead and wait until it comes up on the agenda. Okay, let me see if I can get this back up correctly. There we are. Okay. I need a motion to accept the Planning Commissioner's report as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And I will tell Council that we've instituted a new policy internally on preliminary drafts or anything that comes before the Planning Commission, we staff them up first. We will get with, and Tim Lemmons has been involved with this twice already. We will call the engineer in and we'll go over the preliminary plat or whatever the case may be and staff it up, make sure we're all in the same understanding, and work out any issues prior to it going to the Planning Commission. Should help us in the future. Okay, moving forward, old business. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero six, would you read the title, please?
An ordinance requiring the registration of non-owner occupied short-term rental facilities within the city limits of Ward, providing for permit requirements, rules for operating a short-term rental, and for penalties and fines and for other purposes.
And this is the second reading with modifications as requested last month. And if you've got your document, we, we have now an application that's in there and a permit, and also a process for them to report their fees to us monthly. And I'll tell you, I got all of that from Conway. From Conway's short-term rental reg. I just borrowed it, reworded it, and made it fit ours. Open the floor up for discussion. Hearing no City Council discussion, I open the floor for public discussion. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three zero six for its second reading.
A motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero six is approved on its second reading. Council ought to approve a motion to waive the third reading.
So.
We have a motion to waive the third reading. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Count is three to two. By law, I can bring this to a fourth vote with affirmative vote, and I intend to do that, so I vote an affirmative. Council ought to entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero six.
Make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
With my affirmative yes vote, ordinance two thousand twenty-three has been approved and will become effective in thirty days. Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-three twenty-one, would you read the title, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance zero twenty-twenty-one dash zero three, which amended W one nine three, creating a city planning commission, setting terms of members, election of officers, rules, employment of assistants, expenditures, powers, and duties, and for other purposes.
Council, this was asked to be brought back up to the Council for your consideration. This changes and allows the Planning Commission members to also live within the planning jurisdiction. And the law does allow at least two-thirds shall not hold another office, which they can't, but allows for, it says one-third of the membership of the commission for electors to live outside the corporate limits of its municipality, but within recorded planning jurisdiction is authorized. So I'll open the floor up for discussion.
I'm just not sure, I mean, I've hesitated to, to support it personally. I just think that, I think we're making decisions for the city, and I understand they're outside the city limits, but, you know, to me, if they want to be a part of that, then they should be annexed into the city.
Well, let me remind you, our planning jurisdiction, jurisdiction goes one mile outside of city limits. And they, the subdivisions are without, within one mile, with our, one mile of our city limits abide by our rules.
Right.
So it's, it's conceivable and understandable to have somebody who lives within the planning jurisdiction, also on the planning commission, if so chose.
Right, but then they're making decisions not just for their mile, they're making decisions for what happens right here in this, this neighborhood right here.
This is true.
It's, I personally ain't supporting.
Any other discussion?
Does this add people?
No.
No?
No. Just opens it up to having-
How many do we have?
Seven.
So that's kind of twofold. I mean, if people inside the city are making decisions on their stuff, I mean, why would it, I mean, that sounds kind of counterproductive for them not to be able to be involved in that if they live within our jurisdiction.
A lack of representation.
Right. Exactly.
That'd be kind of put way out there, so it wouldn't be the same as voting.
I'm sorry?
Be the same as voting. Why can't they vote in city elections if they're going to be, when the plan is the same thing to their?
Well, because the law allows for that. The law allows for a planning commission-
Well, we, I know that right now we have an ordinance that says that they're not allowed to be on the planning commission, so that's all, too.
Well, how hard, how hard would it be to get an extra one or two positions added for those?
That takes, that takes your action, that takes, you know, the change of the ordinance. We currently have seven, which, you know, fits on this block, too, so, for logistics-wise, but that'd be up to the Council if they wanted to add more. The law just says you got to have at least five members.
So you're saying that they would, so we would have five from in the city and two from outside the city?
Potentially, potentially. Doesn't have to be, right now, there's no openings, but at some point, somebody will roll off or not want to be on it anymore, and then we'll open it up to anybody who lives within the city and within the planning jurisdiction if it's approved by y'all.
I mean, I understand, I understand the representation issue, it's just, I just, you know, if they're, if they want to be, I understand we can go out a mile, but at the same time, well, why don't they just come into the city if they want to be a part of the city planning?
Well, because sometimes, and we have subdivisions that are at the mile, but they're not touching the city limits or not touching parcels that touch the city limits.
Now, that makes more sense. I didn't, didn't think about that. They're past other people that might not want to be in the city.
Correct, correct. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-one on its first reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-one has been approved on its first reading. Council, I don't see the need to run this through any further, we'll just carry it over to next month for a second reading. Next on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two, would you read the title, please?
An ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement between Lone Oak County and the cities, and the cities within Lone Oak County for the purpose of consolidating the various public safety answering services, PSAP, into one PSAP, which will operate under Lone Oak County nine-one-one governing board to declare an emergency and for other purposes.
Council, I've talked about this many, many times. This was a mandate by law that we had to, by this year, we had to have a consolidation plan to the State Board, which we did for the county. And then we have to have this operational by one January two thousand twenty-five. We have met, the CEOs have met and came up with this interlocal agreement. It has also been run through the State Board for their review of it. And it'll have to be approved by all city councils, of the secretaries, and of the attorneys also. Any discussion?
When are they pulling the trigger on this?
Supposed to be one, one January two thousand twenty-five is when it's supposed to be operational. It'll be built in Cabot in the new Justice Center where the- Yes, thank you. Used to be. It'll be an F-five rated facility in there. It will be, people will work through Cabot's HR program. Procurement will be through Cabot's HR program if you read the agreement. But the board, or the actual configuration, nine-one-one communication center will be run by the board, similar to the library board that runs the libraries in the county.
So just to verify for argument of sake, Chief Benton, this isn't really going to affect the way Ward operates even currently, would it not?
Come on up, Chief.
Lone Oak County already accepts nine-one-one calls for City of Ward, correct? Yes, correct. But what this is, is more than just to bind one center. This is a total communication center.
Dispatch and everything.
So, yes, our dispatch would close, just like Cabot and England and Lone Oak and the Sheriff's Office, they would all close, be done out of one location.
Right.
Will they be moving this from city by city instead of trying to do it the whole county at one time? Do we know that?
Actually, the consolidation has already started.
So, okay.
If I understand right, Carlisle, England, and Lone Oak are now, they don't get nine-one-one calls at all because-
We don't have nine-one-one calls now.
Right, we, we cut our nine-one-one off because it saved the county eleven thousand dollars or something like that by cutting off England, Lone Oak, Carlisle, I think it saved the county, county nine-one-one system, twenty-two thousand dollars, something like that, per month. So that's already happened. And now we still have a day, daytime, not a PSAP, just a dispatch. We don't receive nine-one-one calls at all. And then when it's all consolidated, then yes, it'll be working out of one, one central area, dispatch, receiving calls. We went to, several of us went to Green County and Jonesboro. Green County is a stand-up, they build it from new. It is, it's very nice and works smoothly.
All the nine-one-one funding is going to be going to that in the future?
Yes, yes, yeah. And that's another thing that, in the agreement, I mean, Cabot will be handling all, all the funding, but it has to be separate funding. And again, not one entity will be over the center. The board will be over the center, the board hires the nine-one-one director, the nine-one-one director will hire the dispatchers, and there's, in the consolidation plan from the state, there's a whole lot of checklists we have to go through, like all dispatchers have to be offered a position, and some of them be offered a position with pretty good raises probably because we're going to have to match, the nine-one-one center is going to have to match the current high, which is Cabot. When it's all said and done, it'll be a good thing for the county. And the chief was around and several was around many, many years ago, and you may have been around, too. You could, we couldn't, we tried to do this years ago, we couldn't agree when we're going to have the next meeting, nevertheless consolidation. And that's, that's honest, God, truth. But because the law changed and we had to do this, we have to do this. And it's, it's going to be, once it's all said and done and all the kinks worked out, it'll provide a better emergency services and dispatch for the entire county. Any further discussion?
You have any idea how many minimum dispatchers there are going to be? Are there going to be plenty of coverage?
Well, I mean, that's, they'll do manpower studies, but we're looking, we're talking at four on at all time. I think Green County runs three at all time. You know, depending on the workflow, there'll be studies about that. But the current plan is for ten stations to be available. They're going to set up, I think, five stations, but have the ability to expand in future.
The way White County's doing it is their more busier jurisdictions have a dedicated dispatcher.
Right.
And then like, you know, your smaller departments, they might pile them into one radio.
Well, and then one dispatcher will be dedicated to the fire department and EMS. That's all they're going to do. And then the way Green County does, every two hours, I believe it is, maybe four, but they rotate. They get it from that seat, they go to the next seat, and they're, now they're dispatching for the county police departments. They're not doing the EMS, but they all are trained in every single station. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance-
Motion.
Two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two on its first reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two is approved on its first reading. I entertain a motion to waive suspended rules for a second or third reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three has been suspended, but I entertain a motion to adopt, approve ordinance two thousand twenty- We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two is approved. I entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three dash twenty-two is approved with an emergency clause that'll be effective immediately. Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-three twenty-three, read the title, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Ward zoning regulations, classifications, and boundaries regarding property identified below from an R1 residential to a C2 highly commercial.
It is up on the screen. I would open the floor for discussion.
I had a question about the, does that go all the way over to Dogwood, that jog over there?
No, sir, it does not. In fact, Mayor Canine?
Yes, sir. Kind of show you where this is different from what you've seen in the past, a couple of things. Number one, this is an existing street here. We called it Old Highway Thirty-eight. I believe actually that's another name.
Ferguson.
Ferguson. We decided the first thing we needed to do was to separate-
Hey, Tim, I really need you at the mic so I can get it on mic.
Oh, okay. You got a board?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm with me, I didn't bring it, sorry.
I should have thought to bring mine, my bad.
I should have thought to bring mine, my bad. Okay, I'll just kind of point this way. So anyway, what we wanted to do was we wanted to minimize the commercial property, which we have shown there, outlined in red. The only way to get to that property would be to put in a driveway off of Highway 38. The road that is now existing, we have kept that commercial property from getting over into that road. And that was kind of one of the biggest things I thought that we could do to try to alleviate some of the concerns that we had. Also, sidewalk, what we're looking at doing here would be to bring a sidewalk down the old part of Highway 38, turn it to the new road and bring it up. That way, we would not have sidewalk along Highway 38. I know that was a concern that we had in the past as well. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
The plot that you previously were trying, that was trying to be changed, is that going to be developed into residential, state residential?
Yes, sir. In fact, if you look, everything to the south and to the west, that will all be single-family detached homes, very similar to what's in the neighborhood, both in Huntington and also south of this property. Those will all be residential homes, yes.
So the homes on the south...
Here's Mike.
The homes on the south have not been built yet?
No, ma'am, they have not, that's vacant property.
That's why I couldn't find it.
I wanted to kind of build that into where, when somebody does build on one of these lots, because we've still got to build the water and the sewer and the streets on the residential part. When that gets built, and then those lots will be offered, and that's going to be four or five months down the road before we can get that completed. And this, if we are approved on the commercial tonight, even without the emergency clause, it would be commercial long before they start selling any lots.
I remind counsel that this is a, an ordinance to rezone. They have not come forward to the planning commission yet with the residential preliminary plat, yet.
But it will be in two weeks.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So is there a, is there a church up here at the end, right there where that property line is?
Yes, sir.
Old Austin Methodist Church where I go.
That's the church, his church, this is the United Methodist Church right here.
Okay.
And we have no, we have no objection.
So there's a road that goes right through there?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, and to answer your earlier question, I'm sorry, Dogwood is quarter of a mile plus off to the right.
Any further discussion? Hearing now not entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2023 dash 22 on its first reading.
Make a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Order is 2023 dash 22 has failed its reading.
Is your, can we make up, can we bring it back?
I mean... No, I mean, there's, no. A lot to check on that. But I'm curious, counsel, that voted no, why are you voting no?
Because we didn't change anything but move it down the road 100 yards from where it was first told no. Still has the same issues along that highway that it had at the original place.
I'm asking, what are those issues?
Can I address this for just a second? Because really, this is important, because we did discuss this all at the planning commission. And the real thing here is that we understood Ferguson Road. We knew that that was something that people did not want to have to deal with, was that traffic. And by moving this off of Ferguson Road, what we did, and we were trying to satisfy everybody's desires. And we all know, if we don't start creating some economic development areas, we're going to get passed right on by. This was a great solution to take care of the people that were concerned about it. And then one of the things that I think most of us did, and then the planning commission, it voted four to one to be approved, okay? Here's what it was. The most important thing was not having people drive here coming out of this. This is now only 1.8 acres? 1.8 acres, the whole lot is about 13 acres out of that. So, or it's 3.8 acres, I mean, take that back, 3.8 acres. That means the other, basically, eight acres is still going to be residential. And those individuals are all going to know in advance that there's commercial property already there. And I think that that was the most important thing that we had to do is because that was the concern of the people in Oakmont and the other people around that area. And we could not address the highway. That is RDOT, that is beyond our scope. And I'd like you to really reconsider, because I do believe that if we do not start getting some kind of economic development created in Ward, it's going to go to Austin, or it's going to continue to go to BB, or it's going to go someplace else, or Cabot, but not to us. I am very certain of that, because we make it too difficult for people to try to be able to do business.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Yes.
I got to add, oh, Mr. Peters, I'm disappointed in this. We worked hard to bring this to fruition, you know, that was plausible to everybody, and I'm just disappointed at this point, but we're moving on.
Mayor, if I could just point out one thing. There were two people that showed up at the planning commission meeting that were in, that had questions and concerns. After we had presented our case, both of them were very acceptable to it. In fact, one of them followed me and Mr. Aguit outside and told us, I must say, appreciate us coming back and looking at this and trying to make it work for everybody, what happened, and she was very much in favor of this. So, that being said, is there any way we could table this and bring it back next month, let everybody have a chance to look at it?
It's had a vote of a down vote. The next procedure, if I'm not mistaken, is requires council approval to bring it back separately.
Would the council be willing to do that now, so we could come back next month and try to alleviate any concerns there may be?
I'd be willing to do that, I'd make a motion for that.
We have a motion on the table to allow this evidence to be brought back next month?
I second, I think.
You have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rubel?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Nope. Order fails. Next on agenda is resolution 2023 dash 24.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle side-by-side for the Ward Police Department.
Chief?
Just a quick rundown, we had a, I think it was a 91 model Kawasaki Mule. It just kept costing me money, costing me money. And a lot of it was because it didn't get used enough on that older model. Well, the parks had a need, I've donated to the parks and they're using it. Works great because they use it more. But I still have a need for one. I'm just looking to upgrade and replace.
As you tell, counsel, we got six quotes, actually. Requirement is for two quotes, and so low bid is $19,244.09.
My only question on this is, I'm pretty familiar with these, and the one that the parks got, I'm sure is carbureted, and which is why, when you don't use it all the time, it gums up. Is this CF Moto, is it fuel-injected?
It's throttle, I believe it's throttle body injected.
So that will stop that issue that you're having?
And I personally own one. Excellent machine, and as you can see, price-wise, it's a much better value.
Is this going to an enclosed cab with it?
Not a totally enclosed, no.
Subbuilding foil elements and stuff like that to get in?
Well, they'll have a roof. Of course, we keep it parked under garage in the back.
I know, but I was looking at special events and stuff, if it's raining or whatnot, you're going to get...
They're going to get wet.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you look at the enclosed cab models, you're two and a half times the price.
But this will fit your need, what you need it for.
This one will, yes.
My only concern is, what kind of condition are your patrol cars? What's the oldest patrol car you have? Because this is what we've been paying for a patrol car.
No, patrol cars are a whole lot more than that.
Have they gone up that much?
Oh, yes.
If you try to buy...
I know last year, we bought them for 18 or 20.
You're not getting used ones for less than 25, right?
Okay, well...
And those are in the 40s, but...
I mean, that's my only question is, what's the oldest patrol car you have? Is it going to need to be replaced, more importantly than buying this thing?
A 2016 is my oldest patrol car.
Okay, because I did notice it said missing persons, and we've had three issues, instances of missing persons, so it's not really used for that. So is it just special events?
It depends on the situation for the missing person.
Okay, I've only seen three in 2022 on the report.
I've had to go out into the unincorporated, unimproved areas looking for people.
And you know I'm not anti-police, I'm just, are you going to need a patrol car in a month?
No.
Oh, Lord.
Probably within two years.
I mean, that was my biggest question, is the cost of this thing?
Side-by-side will last us, take care of it easily 10 years.
Oh, more than that.
Right.
But, no, and I do, currently, knock on wood, nothing happens. But even if I had to replace patrol car, I have the funding.
Okay, because it did say general funds, so...
It came out, you have front page, police department or general funds, depending on the need, if we need to backfill him. But if he has money in the general and the police department funds, he'll pay for it.
That's the only place, the only question I have.
Understandable, and that's fine, but no, but patrol cars, we're doing good. You know, there have been some maintenance issues with them, but that could happen to a newer.
Yes.
I'm doing well on patrol cars right now.
Okay. Because you know I love you.
Any further discussion? Hearing now not entertain a motion to approve resolution 2023...
Motion.
...dash 24.
Second.
A motion, second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 24 is approved.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is resolution... There we go. 2023 dash 25, would you read the title, please?
Resolution authorizing the use of a separate checking account for Arkansas Economic Development Commission grant fund.
Counsel, this, we just got $500,000 from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission on this vacuum system rehab. We have requested 700-plus thousand from ANRC. We're waiting on that, but we need this into a separate checking account, so...
Motion.
With that, I entertain a motion, I have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 25 is approved, thank you, counsel. Counsel, you're provided, I think, by mail, copy legislative audit. I need to read you one particular line, you're welcome to read all of it, and pass out this letter from our CPA. Pass those over there. During the legislative audit, we have one write-up. The expenditures exceeded budgeted appropriations but for the general fund by $401,997, or 14% in compliance and non-compliance with Arkansas Code 1458-203. I'll read the letter from our CPA to Ms. Gassaway, who is the head of the legislative audit. Says during 2022, I amended the budget of City of Ward in error. An amount budgeted for capital expenditures of $554,000 was included in interfund transfer in error. This error caused the city's budget expenditures to be underbudgeted by $401,997,000. In order to avoid this error in presentation of the budget in the future, a final review of the proposed budget will be formed by the mayor, department heads, finance director, and the CPA before presentation to the council. Mr. Don Davis said in his 30 years of practice, it's never happened, and he is embarrassed about it. But that's the reasoning, and I have turned my reporting also to the legislative audit with this letter, and they've accepted that as the reasoning. So what I need is a, well, discussion, any discussion? Hearing now entertain a motion to accept the understanding of the reading of the legislative audit report and the loan finding.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you, counsel. Next up on agenda is my mayor's report. We're still waiting on the 30% to sign for the SARS IV project, meter replacement project. The base stations have been installed, and after the cell phone modems are installed and tested, they'll start meter replacement and endpoint installation will begin. I just talked about the AEDC, removing the remaining homes off the vacuum system. Balding Street overlay is complete, it looks very, very good up there. The RDOT TAP RIP grant proposal starts five, waiting RDOT's decision on that. We're still waiting on the street aid committee's decision on those streets we put forward to them, and that should come in January. Highway 319 from Highway 38, 367 has a start date on or about October 30th. And that should take about two weeks to complete. It'll add shoulders and resurfacing, it adds two-foot shoulders. And we have turned in all paperwork for the office's energy performance contracting revolving loan lease fund request. Said earlier, we've got the UDC information, staff will review it, we'll get it to the planning commission for their review, and we'll have public hearings on that before it gets to you all for approval. License plate reader, we have one approved, and still waiting for the vendor to get that installed. I said in the reading right here, they have supplied necessary bond information, they have done that already. We're just waiting on RDOT and them to give the okay for them to put that first camera up, as they're still working to get the other three approved. We talked about the consolidate 911 center, broadband deployment, Comcast has notified the city, they're extending their build-out to Oakland Grove, and we have plans on that. And we are still waiting to report from Arkansas Rural Water Association on the rate study. And if you have Arkansas Business, and if I get permission, I'll report it to you. Arkansas Business had a very good article today on the Arkansas Rural Water, on their, what they do, and it talked about the rate studies that, once done, have to be informed by law. And that is my mayor's report for today. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done. Announcements. Little Rock Air Force Base, excuse me, before I do that. Casey, did you want to request?
I'll talk with you more.
Okay. Announcements, Little Rock Air Force Base Thunderbirds, it'll be this weekend. I encourage you to go. I will be out there all three days with my kids and grandkids, me and 200,000 each day, I guess. Planning commission meeting on 23rd at 7:00 PM. Harvest Fest on 28th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Sports Complex. Our next city council meeting is November 13th, and that's a date change, remember y'all approved that last month. 6:30, Christmas tree, Christmas parade, tree lighting December 3rd. And of course, the Great American Eclipse is August, or excuse me, April 8th. And like I said, our next city council meeting is November 16th. With that, that concludes our agenda for tonight. Pardon me? You're right. That was a test, and y'all passed. Okay. The date for the next... Did we wake you up, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
Second, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel. You can stay.